Okay, let's try again. Your call. All right, I'm sorry. So I call Town Commission of November eighth to order. Please stand for the pledge and the indication. I pledge allegiance of the United States and to the Republic for which this is founded. Sal.
Father God, thank you once again for entrusting us with your town. I ask that you give us your wisdom, the sermon. Help us make decisions that are best for our citizens. May we honor you and all we say this evening. Your name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Sal. Roll call.
President.
Herr Pollin.
Here.
Mr. Ramos.
President.
Vice Mayor Satterfield. Not here. Mayor Stark.
Yeah.
We have a forum. Okay, I'm gonna change the order of the agenda, so I wanted to let you guys know in advance. We have a state of emergency, right, Steve?
Yes.
That to enact, so that will go now, the resolution. And then after that will be public forum consent agenda, and then we are going to debut at John's Lake up after the consent agenda. So y'all don't have to sit during some of our, sit through some of our boring stuff. So state of emergency. It's meaningful.
Do they, do they need to both add it to the agenda and then approve it? Or just approve it?
They probably should approve that being added to the agenda. We have to approve the change of agenda too, or just adding something?
You can just change the order of the agenda.
It's just to add addition?
The emergency, yeah. Yes, we could take a vote to add it to the agenda.
So I need a motion about the state of emergency resolution.
I'll make a
storm.
I'll make a motion to add the state of emergency resolution to the consent agenda.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. As we know, we have tropical storm coming. And this enables many things, including FEMA. So it is something that we do every time we have a storm that we believe will hit our town. And it's a resolution of the town. Do you, do I read this or read this, Elise?
You can read.
Okay, resolution of the Town Commission of Oakland, Florida, adopting an amended budget for fiscal funds. I just read what resolution and I took it. See, I don't have another resolution.
Well, yeah.
Proclamation. Oh, it's a proclamation. I thought it was a red tape. All right, this is a proclamation of the Town of Oakland, Florida declaring a state of local emergency. Whereas section two fifty-two dash thirty-eight three Florida statute authorizes the Town of Oakland to declare a state of local emergency and to waive the procedures, formalities, and otherwise required of political subdivisions by law. I'm gonna shorten it a little bit. So we don't vote on proclamations perhaps. Correct. All right. We are now to public forum. If there's anybody here who wishes to speak about something that is not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to speak. We ask that you keep your comments short and that you sign in. Okay? Consent agenda. Does anybody here have any questions about anything on the consent agenda? I need a motion, please.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions, any comments, any public comments? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
All right, moving up. Baby at John's Lake under, under policy, under other policy matters of preliminary subdivision plan. And Brad, I see you're here.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I apologize for being late. I was taking care of a free storm pre issuing the town of Windermere. Hopefully it stays on. Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'm Brad Quinones, who I'm serving as a contractor town planner. As Mayor said, I'm having back for you this evening is the baby of John's Lake subdivision plan. As you all recall, this was with you at your last meeting at the end of October. And quite a bit of discussion and the commission at that time table to specifically to come back to address the size of the three lots that are along the lake. So that is what the focus of what we submitted this after report. It was what the applicant did re submit as well for your consideration this evening. Mayor, I have a very short presentation. I won't go through all the other information that I've already done, but I am here to answer any questions about anything that we did discuss previously. If that is a concern from by anyone. So in terms of these three lots, they are just under eighty feet in width. They're seventy point nine four, seventy-nine and eighty feet. Those are the widths of that. As we had presented earlier, or previous hearings, this project within its design district, within the neighborhood general design district, the minimum allowed lot width is seventy feet. Is the minimum allowed lot width within this design district that this property has. Also, this property under its future land use classification, which is low density residential, allows a density of development up to three point four nine dwelling units per acre. Based on the size of this property and the twenty proposed lots, they are well under that at two point eight six dwelling units per acre. They actually are less than the potential allow maximum density. So when we as staff look at this application, that's the things that we have to look at, or what are the requirements of your code? Both on your comprehensive plan, particularly related to the densities of the property, then as well as your zoning and your design district requirements, and those are the pieces that we look at. Which, which are critical. So when we evaluate those against your requirements, we do find those consistent because it does meet the density requirement. It also meets the lot width requirement. You don't have within your code or within your design standards a differential between lakefront and non-lakefront lots within your design code. So that's why we do recommend approval of it. We do find that consistent. Another part of, a big part of this discussion was, you know, the consistency and compatibility with John's Landing next door and those like those, those lots on the lake. And you see in my staff report, there's a difference. And the biggest difference is John's Landing was done many years ago. Your code was different then. You didn't have your design districts that you have today, so that they were developed prior to this than today. Back then, they may, they may not have enabled. The other part, which is very, very part of this, they're on septic. And you need to have a half acre for septic tanks, which then requires those larger lot sizes. On this project proposed is they are going to be there on sewer. So then they don't require the larger lot sizes and they also have water. So really, the difference in these lot sizes between what's in John's Landing and what's being proposed here, it's really the code is different today than it was then. And your code today does allow these smaller lot sizes within this project. So that's what I have to present to you about the lot sizes. I, as I said, I won't go into any of the other issues once you have questions about them. We, we do recommend approval. We do have the conditions as part of your staff report to have that. There's still, there will be the agreement with the HOA about what the wall or buffer will be between them. That's still in play. That's my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions you have. I know the applicant has information to present as well.
All right. Do we have any questions for Brad? We, I think are clarifying what we had talked about at the last meeting was within the guidelines and within the law, there's, the lot sizes are met.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you know, if we wanna, if we want to retake a look at that, that's gonna have to be for another day. So do I have any further questions at the table right now?
Not at the moment.
So on page forty-two of my packet from the last meeting, lot size of like lot twelve was eleven thousand and ten square feet. Thirteen was eleven thousand, four hundred and twelve square feet, and then fourteen was like four point three six acres. Let me go by acres. The last week, twelve was point two five three acres. Thirteen was point two six two acres. I'm sorry, it's hard to read. I had to get magnified to read the. And then fourteen point three three six acres. And then in the packet today, they've gotten a lot larger. Twelve is fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-six square feet, which is like a forty percent increase. Thirteen is seventeen thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven square feet, a fifty-three percent increase. And then fourteen is twenty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-six square feet, giving it like a forty-six percent increase.
I mean, this is what you want. Why are we talking about it?
I'm just trying to figure out what is, did they increase the size of the lots or what?
I'll let that, sir, the applicant to address that issue.
Okay, I want to do that after we get a motion on the table. Okay, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve. What, what order is?
Oh, there's not an order. Just a, oh, you got a motion.
Yep. So you make a motion to approve the baby at John's Lake preliminary subjects.
Okay, I make a motion to approve baby at John's Lake preliminary subdivision plan.
With, with the conditions listed under the recommendation.
Correct.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second. Now, Rick, do you want to hear an answer to that question?
Yeah, I'm just curious. I mean, I'm not, I'm not challenging whether it's the code or not. I'm just trying to figure out, did they increase the size of the lots since the last?
This is something that could have been dealt with between Thursday and now. So Steve could answer that question, or Brad. So anyway, Ed? Want to come up?
To answer, Ed, the applicant for Bayview at John's Lake. To answer that question, I'd like to call up Ed Guerrero, who's a part of our civil team, just to maybe
Hey, I need a short answer, please.
A short answer.
Yeah.
Have one for.
Okay.
So the loss prior to the last site plan, you had a lot extended at the, we've got a sway on the rear, so we just end the lots there. We extended the lots all the way to the property line. And there's no easement or anything down there, so lots, that's why they're so much so
To the survey line.
Right, we had it, we stopped it. I don't know how many people, we stopped it short of the survey line with the initial site plan we sent you. This one, we just extended it and we got real easements that were previously shown there.
And if you go through Orange County Property Praiser, you will see that all lot calculations in terms of square footage and acreage are done to the survey line.
So, so previously it was a mistake and now this is, this is the correct.
Correcting of.
That, that's how they will be.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any other questions?
Are you in charge?
I'm asking questions. If, if there are questions.
We'll get there.
Okay.
Okay. So I have a motion on the table. Do I have anything else here at the table?
I'd like to make a few comments. I don't know.
Please.
So I'm not happy that the lots are small blur than the typical on John's Lake. But I am very concerned on the law and that you guys met all the requirements. I wish they were larger. That's how I feel, but I sit here as a commissioner to defend and help fill the budget of our town and our citizens. And having to go fight this and get into a lawsuit and lose hundreds of thousands for unnecessary waste of money in overhead on our already staff that's overwhelmed. I don't see why we should. And that's, I just wanted to make that because I wasn't last time to say it, but I'm it, it meets, it matches the rest of the
If, if I'm, and I appreciate those comments. Have the commission looked or had the ability or time to look at the lot analysis? Have you, have you?
I have.
Looked at it, yes. Well, not the, the lot analysis that we can go through if you wish, I can summarize it. But basically, the takeaway from that analysis is that a, a lot mass type of approach, lot massing was taken to evaluate our twenty to their two hundred and sixty-six. So in order to do that, we, we had to, to break the constitution of those lots into groupings that could then be compared. So in doing so, we, we ended up with phase one and phase two analysis of, of those, of those lots being highly compatible in terms of the massing. Now, in, in terms of the, the lakefront lots, and I can go through that.
I understood it. I understood it very well.
So, so there is basis to, to conclude that the lot massing, it's very difficult to, with two hundred and sixty-six versus twenty or versus, you know, seventeen, when you take away the three to, to, to do it otherwise. So I, I kind of dissected it into, into grouping subsets. But then we could understand the relationship and all the data that's been put forth basically indicates a high degree of compatibility from a lot massing standpoint. The last time we spoke, we spoke about the ten of thirty-two or thirty-one lots on the lake and how those, those particular lots may be similar or, or, or not. And, and those, those ten out of thirty-two from a overall size compare, as you saw on the report, Bayview has an average of eighteen thousand, seventy-six per feet on an average. And the ten comparable lots are twenty-six, eight, seventy-six. So that's within a sixty percent, sixty-seven percent of, of sizing on ten of, of thirty-one, which is, which is basically thirty-two percent of those like front lots. In addition to that, from a, from a, from a standpoint of ad street width, the average ad street width of those ten lots are eighty-six. Our ten, our, our three are seventy-nine. So that's a ninety-two percent compatibility.
Okay.
Well, Mayor Stark, if I may, I, I understand, but you know, there, there are also in the second presentation compelling information. Have you been able to
Yes.
evaluate the second presentation that I made? Basically, it, it starts with the Hall Island, which was recently approved under the Town of Oakland twenty twenty. There we have sixteen lots on the lake. And, and most of those, those lots are either as large or many are less in size. So there is a, an example case in point that you'll see recently approved lots on the lake, albeit as different lake, that were of the, of the same, if not less, but most, most are less, quite frankly. Our lot widths at lake, starting with lot twelve, is eighty-four point one four. Our lot width on, on lot thirteen is eighty-two point five eight. Our lot width on, on fourteen is eighty-seven point three two at lake. There's also in the report across the lake, albeit in a different county, Lake County, two major subdivisions, one by Pulte Homes, Lakeview Preserve, another by Lenar Homes.
Ed, you don't care what other counties do.
I understand. I offer them as a, as
You don't care.
No.
You don't.
May I, may I say why I present? I, I state that only because it does, it does indicate a market trend, a, a trend of consumer
I understand that.
Trends. And, and that is hard to deny, you know, in terms of all this. So basically, the, the the conclusion is from a compatibility, from a, from an analysis and a very subjective, I'm sorry, objective approach, there is basis for, for compatibility.
I understand that.
Commission, just in, or
I understand it.
Your state.
And I really don't care about the comparability about anybody else except
Oh, to, to give you
And our citizens, so that's all.
And we're, we're, I think we understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. And I appreciate your comments. But there is a yes motion on the table. We understand, I believe, where we are legally. And we are prepared to to, to deal with that. And unfortunately, if this is where we are legally, then this is something that we have to look at ourselves for. Market trends are important. But we have always prided ourselves in going our own way. But like I said, this is, this is a legality and we are prepared to live with that legality. And that's, that's the best we can do at this point. Now, if somebody else comes in and we change our code, right. But this one got through the gate. So I'm sure it will be a very nice development. It does really fit in with the other two developments there for the most part. So anyway, at this point, I'm going to take some public comment and then we're going to bring it back to the table and we're going to
Do reserves. Press.
If you get a yes, you get no time. Okay, do we have anybody from the public who wishes to speak? We ask that you keep your comments short and concise. You don't repeat what someone else has said and you come to the podium. Anna.
Obviously addressing the board and Ed. I have spoken with him before and he had already explained to me that legally, he can do exactly what they proposed. But just because something is legal doesn't mean it's right and it should be done. I'm a homeowner adjacent to the property. I'm a lakefront homeowner. And I see what they're doing is degrading to what I have and the rest of the lake and those of us who take pride in living on that lake and taking care of it and keeping it less dense, for lack of better words. I, you know, I don't I don't get into the legal part, but I'm very disturbed by the fact that he thinks degrading the future and doing less and less and having smaller lots and all this is a good thing for our community. It is not. And we'll be paying the price if he does this because then it will be grandfathered in. And everybody's gonna say, yeah, but, yeah, but, yeah, but. So as a lakefront homeowner, I oppose these three lakefront lots dramatically. I don't see why they can't do two and make it back up with what they built. And it would go a long way for public, what would be the right word? Appreciation, however you want to say it, to help us and not take away from the end.
And I appreciate, I appreciate your position, but this is in our code and we do not have the wherewithal.
Well, like you said, he's made the price to fight it. So, and, and, but I'm addressing Ed with these words.
Okay.
I don't appreciate the fact of what he's doing.
Okay.
And the fact that you can do it doesn't make it right.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Anybody else? Anna, tell us who you are.
I'm Billy Berry. I'm part of the HOA with the, I understand legality and everything like that. And something was mentioned that the fence or the wall had already been fixed to, you know, here. But it had told us you are going to build a wall, correct?
Yep.
So that's
HOA president was here at the last meeting and she indicated that that had been dealt with.
Right, but someone here said that that hadn't been dealt with, completed here. But I just wanted to hear from Ed if he was going to put it to the
I think Brad said that, right?
That's part of it. Okay. That's what I just wanted to hear that he was going to build a wall.
Okay.
I think it
Mayor, just make sure it's very clear for everyone. What the condition just says is that when they come in for actual permitting, they need to submit the, the agreement with the HOA about what they are going to build. Don't have is that agreement yet, what it is, but yes, they'll have the agreement and it'll be part of the record when they come in for actual development.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Ed?
I'm sorry, I was supposed to be called on to speak. I'm counsel for the applicant.
I didn't have you on the agenda, so.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. As I want, you know, my job is make you feel better about the compatibility. And when you look at this and when you look at other lots in the near vicinity, including John's Landing, there are many lots that are less than eighty feet. There are lots that have been approved. It was in the slide presentation. They're in the fifty to sixty foot range. And I have documents for that on the record and for
But why, you know, Ted, I appreciate your time. I appreciate you coming out here. But I, you know, I think we can all see the way this is going. I don't think we need another, you know, statement of, of why we should do this.
Okay, I understand. I just, if I can, I will share these, give you these for the record and just
Great, if they go into the record, that would be perfect.
And you would like to, but I just want you to know that when you look at the lots from the lakefront, which I think is more
You don't have to rub it in.
No, it's not.
I understand.
There are a lot of smaller lots in the vicinity of these, of these lots.
Thank you very much.
Clerk, town clerk. Clerk of the record. But you know, I just, for the, you know, we've been beating this thing up for three, three go rounds now and we're tired.
I understand.
We understand where we stand and we're gonna live with it. And then if we want to change it, we will. All right, anybody else?
I have a question.
Sure.
I was looking at these drawings and looking at the tree scapes that they're proposing, that I have. And I know for a fact that there are two oaks down by the lakefront on the corners of the properties that exist. And have been there for years and I don't know if they address it or not. I'm curious to whether those are going to be bulldozed or left in place.
I, what I can tell you, and then we'll ask Ed or Brad, is we replace inch for inch any trees that come down. We hate it when we have to take down a good tree. So, but sometimes it's unavoidable.
Sometimes it is. And so I'm just curious what the protection is on those existing
I, Brad may be able to tell you.
Yeah, on, back on the back side around the lake, you will see on there they do move the, the swale to go around the tree. So they are looking to protect it as what we have now. But as you said, Mayor, everything would be an inch for an replacement, but they are at this point showing they are looking to
That's good.
Yes, ma'am.
That's good. Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right, taking it back to the table.
All right.
We have any further comments or questions?
Yes.
You do?
Well, we're gonna vote.
But do you have any comments or
Yes.
Before we vote?
Questions, comments only.
Okay, comments, please.
I'm gonna be voting based on legality. Based on the current code. That's what I'm gonna be voting on. And yes, I feel this is the right thing for the citizens, not
That's what I'm going to be voting on. And yes, I feel this is the right thing for the citizens, not spending unnecessary funds. Something that we may lose. Welcome. And, uh, maybe in the future we'll change it. Right now, the way it stands, I'm voting on where we're at right now with the legality. That's the way I feel. I wish it looked.
Rick, do you have anything to say?
No, sure.
You could say whatever you want.
All right. If I can, I'll say something. I don't agree with them when they say the lot sizes are equal. They just, all they're talking about is lot width. You gotta look at the whole square footage and they aren't equal. They're about about half the size of the John's Lake one. So if you just look at, and every, all I just talk about is lot width, you need to talk about the whole lot size.
Yeah, but it, as long as it fits.
I know. I know. You, you, I understand.
But, okay, but I take your point. Okay?
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Joseph, you're the only one left.
No, I share their sentiment. I mean, we.
I think.
Talking about the last, yeah, so I'm not going to be repetitive, so.
It's okay.
Or redundant. No, no. This is all, you know, it is what it is, but.
But we are.
We've had the discussion about the law. And this is not, this is not the first time we've dealt with the law, other things. And sometimes, you know, the zoning.
Got to swallow a bitter pill.
And you mentioned not to pay the price to fight. The citizens will be paying for that fight in vain, and I don't want that to happen. I don't want that to happen.
They would have changed the damn rule.
He bowed up three times. We bowed up the last two meetings.
But not legally.
Well, we don't have a legal.
If you would.
To stand up.
My point is, they don't want to fight either or the delay. And if you had stood up to that, I think it would have changed that.
Well.
It would have spent up.
I appreciate, I appreciate, that's what you think.
I get to look at, out of my porch, the rest of my life, completed density of these three little lot right next to my property and.
I understand. I understand.
Good stuff.
There's a lot of, you know, things change, things change. And unfortunately, sometimes it's not always easy. And, um, we did bow up. I think we did what we could. And it's on us. Really is. It's on us. So.
It's a good piece.
I know.
And I, you know, appreciate you listening. Thank you.
All right. This is three meetings that we've had for this, just for reference, that I remember. Am I right? First meeting, the applicant was woefully unprepared. Second meeting, we were pushing back. And the third meeting, we're facing reality.
Can I add to that?
Yes.
We also, um, made sure that it was, it was communication back and forth with the HOA as well.
Yes.
Because the HOA.
They weren't ready either.
Had a, a big part of making sure before anybody came back to us, it was a discussion with HOA and the African. So that was a big part of that you pushed.
Yep. Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the, um, John's Lake preliminary subdivision plan. So this isn't the end. There's two more approvals that they have to get to. Um, so are, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Passes. And I think we should all be. Give you a minute to. Thank you. We'll give you a minute to get buttoned up. Good night.
Aye.
It is, it's close to one.
And boom, they go, but I have to, I'm going to take a five minute break. All right. So now we're moving back to our regularly scheduled agenda. Um, we have a first public meeting of ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash.
This is the first public hearing ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-one in ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, creating chapter forty-nine, special events of the town's quarter of our offenses, fighting for conflicts, that's provided for severability and providing an effective date.
All right, uh, commissioners. We've got, got the, uh, what vote got before you, the special events sort of. One of the things I talked about, uh, working on, on tying up some listens and, and putting some processes in place. Really, you know, hitting some of the details, um, that we need to as a town that's growing. And one of the, uh, the things that has come up has been our special event process. So, um, the purpose of this, before you, this ordinance is to, um, to help put together that process. We used to run all of this through planning and zoning. And as you, as you know, we are changing how we're doing business. So what we're doing is, is actually codifying our, our special events process. Uh, putting together, uh, a more defined process that we can follow as staff. Putting the right people in place to review this process and, um, be able to move this forward. And as, as part of this, we're also including our, uh, our rental facilities. You'll see, uh, the rental rates bring that at the second, um, hearing on this in December. Uh, updating our rental rates for our rental facilities and then making sure we have all of the legislation in place to be able to, to put all these things, uh, in place moving forward. So that's what this ordinance is doing. And basically, uh, what does the purpose of this is to identify those private events requiring town approval to ensure public safety. Uh, creating the standardized method for lettering fees to cover, cover town costs. And establishing the ability for the town to be fairly compensated for the private use of town facilities. Um, so what we're doing with this is basically we are, um, taking and defining what a special event is. Uh, it's an activity ceremony or an exhibition show, concert, patent, rally, parade, demonstration or assembly other than the normal day-to-day season appearances. Uh, classifying those, you know, so that we can, you know, as we review these things, we can put the right things in place that need to be in place. Whether it's a public event of more than a hundred and fifty people or a public event that would need street closure or a street party. Um, and so that we can react accordingly to these different kinds of things. Um, the special events permit ordinance would allow the, the, the town to put these, uh, uh, fees in place on real expenses. The ordinance would allow us to create this special event permit application. Uh, we will answer this through the administration and communications. Uh, and then, uh, included in that will be Orange County Fire, open police department and public works. Uh, and again, this was previously managed by planning and zoning. And then it will also allow for the fair use of town and facility. So we're going to put this ordinance in place. We're going to a, a great resolution with you next, next month that we can, you know, better define and better able to serve the, the residents of the town with these different things that, that might come up. So the, the goal is to ensure proper planning, organization and safety procedures are in place for all through third-party events to town and to ensure and both safe experience for residents. And, but you will see, you've got the, the full ordinance in your package and there are some exceptions when we're doing town events. There's some additional information if somebody want, were wanting to do fireworks and, you know, it covers a lot of different areas that we previously really didn't have well defined uh, within the town. So this will help us manage these events and be able to, uh, there's thresholds when staff can approve and then there's thresholds when it needs to come to the commission. Um, if the event's large enough, then it'll need to come into the commission for approval. So this, this puts all those things in place. Um, so the staff recommendation is to approve this ordinance twenty-two-two dash twenty-one, adopting the special events permit. It's going to be the first reading. So there will be a second reading. So if you do, as you go through this, have any additional questions, we'll be happy to answer those prior to the second. And we talked previously, we just didn't do it as part of the budget process about updating our CE schedule for, uh, our meeting hall and some of the other, uh, things that we have here in towns, uh, that we do rent, um, because we are, um,
We're quite popular.
Not keeping up with the market and we just want to make sure that we're recouping the cost that we should as far as the, the rentals. It's not intended to be a moneymaker. We are just trying to recruit the costs of staff time and, and, you know, the maintenance of the, the rental.
Building, yeah.
So with that, um, if you have any questions, you'd have an answer. And if you have any, as you read through it, if you have any additional questions between now and the next reading, please get with me, um, or Jack and we can, uh, process.
Okay. Any questions? All right. I need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance two zero two-two dash two-one. I'll second it.
Okay, move seconded. Anybody have any questions? I think we're all, well, aside from Deborah and Kathy, we're all staff.
I think the comment is we're getting hot. Everybody loves us now.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. We are quite popular. Okay, um, no comments. I bring it back to the table. Anything else? On paper? Aye. All right. Second public hearing ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two.
All right. Second public hearing ordinance twenty-two-two dash twenty-two in ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, approving the third amendment to the development agreement for the Oakland Park sign unit development, providing for conflict, providing for severability and providing an effective.
And Mayor, please, I'll have a very quick presentation for you. Uh, as Brad, this is your second hearing for to amend the development agreement for Oakland Park, uh, Oakland Park representative here also. To help us, if there's any questions, what this meeting is doing, an amendment. Basically, what it's allowing for is some more flexibility in terms of the application of these standards, also update them to reflect things that are actually occurring within the development. Be more consistent with. But what this does is if there's some deviations, relatively minor deviations and like setbacks or things like that, it allows a process where if the HOA's appointed town architect finds it compliant with their development, with their design standards, it then comes to us as the staff. We review it also to verify it and we're able to administratively, you know, permit some alterations. Um, things would be very, they're minor and standard. One of the things was always the protection though, like maintaining the proper building separations and those kinds of things. So those are always in place. So this provides for that, that efficient cert, um, way to deal with those issues while protecting the character and what the town wants to see happen with that development. So that's my quick presentation for you. If there's any specific questions about it, I'll do my best to answer them. And again, the folks in Oakland Park are here. It also helped with those answers.
Any questions, any comments? All right. Need a motion, please?
I'll make a motion, approve ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-two.
I'll second it.
Mo- the motion and seconded. All right. Anybody in the audience? Deborah, I don't think you need to beat this to death, right? I know. Thank you very much. All right. That's what I like. Okay, bring back the table. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Resolution twenty-two dash thirteen, budget amendment.
Just may I, uh, bring this, uh, resolution forward to you, uh, twenty-two, twenty-two-two dash thirteen. It's a budget amendment. The, the town by statute has up to sixty days after the end of the fiscal year to make any adjustments to the budget. Um, we had a very busy year, uh, this year, uh, mostly in the building services area. Uh, it far exceeded the revenues that we were expecting, uh, as well as far exceeded the expenses on the, on the expense side of building services, building permits and, and, uh, just, just general, uh, activity under, under those planning and building services. So with that, we need to recognize that revenue and also recognize the fact that we have increased expenses in order to, to show that we have a balanced budget. Um, and that's the, the point of this amendment. Uh, we, um, again, we had a very, very large increase in revenues, even some of the, the revenues, uh, from states, uh, sales tax and, and some of those were higher than what was expected. So those adjustments have been made on the expense side. Um, there's been some increases due to fuel costs, uh, risk insurance and like I said, building services were, were three of the biggest parts of it. So we've made those adjustments. We do show that we'll, we will be increasing reserves based off the last year activity. Um, revenues did exceed expenses for the year in actuals. Um, but this is what we're doing here is amending the budget, um, to make sure that we're within our budget, uh, spending. So I, the recommendation from staff is to approve resolution twenty-two-two dash thirteen. This was, um, advertised as, uh, a budget amendment. Um, and, um, this is within the, the state statutes to do this, uh, budget amendment.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, anybody from, do we have any public here? No. All right. Um, I'll take it back to the table. All in favor?
All.
Aye.
Did we make a motion?
Make a motion.
We need a motion. Oh, I just, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to.
I'm rattled.
Twenty-two-two dash thirteen budget amendment.
Oh, second it.
Okay, it's a motion and seconded. On paper.
Aye, aye.
Sorry about that. All right, we're to town manager report and I'm assuming that we'll, you'll fill us in on any, uh, tropical storm related items?
Yeah, real quick. So, uh, first thing, O C P S didn't make their decision until almost five o'clock, but they are closing on Thursday and Friday. So the Oakland Avenue Charter School will be following in suit with that and will be closed Thursday and Friday. I haven't, uh, made the call, but we will, uh, close town offices on Thursday. Town offices were already going to be closed on Friday for Veterans Day. So, uh, town will be closed Thursday and Friday. Uh, Jack and I will be monitoring things tomorrow. If we do need to leave, let staff leave early tomorrow afternoon, we will, based on the conditions. But right now it's looking like we'll be able to have a normal day tomorrow and then just be closed on Thursday. Um, Alicia has done a great job with standing up the website again. We've got information on, uh, what's currently tropical storm Nicole, uh, on the website. So, um, please, uh, please call me anytime you have any questions, you know, over the next couple of days, but we'll also try to keep this up to date with what's going on. Um, I know Chief Eason and Lieutenant Campbell have been putting together their plan on how they will deal with, from a public safety standpoint. Mike has been working with his staff and with Jack to make sure that, uh, the rest of the town, uh, from a public work standpoint is ready. If we do have essential staff that need to come in on Friday for cleanup, that will coordinate that, um, uh, accordingly. But other than that, that, uh, anybody that's not, not essential will not be here on Thursday and Friday. Um, trying to think if I have any.
Anything else from, um, trash pickup?
Uh, there was some stuff on here. Um, you're not going to be picking up tomorrow.
Correct.
They're not.
No.
They're not going to recycle them up.
The, uh, waste management said they're going to operate at the bill of the, the thirty mile per hour window hits. So we didn't want to take that chance to have everybody put stuff out and then have it show up. So we canceled the yard waste and.
Yeah, recycling and yard.
Communicated that.
It's, yes, she did.
It's on here and, and I'm sure Alicia will communicate that. So recycling yard waste collection will be suspended on Wednesday, November ninth.
Since we have open containers, I think it's a good idea to cancel it anyway. It would just get blown.
Yeah.
All over the street.
Yeah, it's supposed to be all over Blosbury tomorrow and breezy, you know, as these, these swell lines come through. But, um, I think in general, we'll, we'll, like I said, we'll be open tomorrow. Um, and then we'll be closed down on, on Thursday. So, um, anything else? Any other questions? Any, any concerns?
This is the time, I know last time they didn't cancel it and they came and they didn't really pick up everything, but it was just for, um, this, this one is going out.
Yes.
But they did come to the community. I don't know what they did. They went through, they went through the community for that, pick up some stuff, so.
Um, and then I did say to Steve, just so I feel like I said it. Whoever monitors those pumps in the cemetery, which is not us, needs to stay on top of that as much as possible. I do not want to make national news again.
Yeah, we had, uh, we had Doug Hoffman this morning. He assured us and I checked it out earlier. We have both pumps in the cemetery, ready to operate.
Yeah, it's a matter of they need to get them going.
Correct.
The right.
I have a permanent pick for this.
They're working on it. They've got a permit in with St. John's that's being. They're working on it, they've got a permit in with St. John's that's being reviewed, but it's, it's gonna take some time.
That have to do with the, when they get Riley Farms going and get that rid.
They got two, two separate things going on, I, I'd rather not talk about it here, but they are, they are working on, on both of those situations.
Yeah, I, I get tired of hearing, yeah, they're working on it, they've been working on the cemetery for two years.
Yes ma'am.
Well.
A lot unhappy.
Pardon?
I said a lot unhappy families over there.
Yeah, and it's just disrespectful, I know it's not us, but it looks like us.
Looks like us.
And somebody seems to think that we should completely redo, and I kept thinking, don't you know we don't own that? You know, we wanna, we wanna support, but we don't own it. So, anyway, um, that's it?
Yep, that's it for me.
Okey dokey, um, we'll start over here.
I don't have anything.
Don't have anything?
Um, our next meeting, December thirteenth?
Yes.
What, what's, what do we expect, um, the hundred and thirty-five year anniversary, can I give you just a small rundown?
We are working with the chamber, they sent out the invites, we are expecting just to have a, like, a, a photo opportunity and a, and a small reception. So it'll be from five to five-thirty, and then we've got a workshop at six o'clock for the, the commission.
Do we have a banner for our new logo yet?
I don't know that we do, yeah.
Can we have one made by then, so we can?
I will.
Use it as our.
That's a good idea.
For our thirty-five?
I will work on that.
Okay.
But we do now know how much water tower cost to pay.
Yes. You okay, you okay with the price?
Yes, could you tell? I wasn't sure why you were shushing me.
Or I want.
I could have, I could have picked you thanks.
I wanted to hear you, and they tried to raise the price.
Oh, okay. That's not what I was thinking.
That's a bargain.
Okay, good.
Very good price.
That is, shockingly. I, cause, um, just one minute, um, when Oakland Park was getting ready to be built, Neil Harris was in, in place there, and he said, you need a fountain for your town center, because town center was being redone at the same time, and so Jay Evans, the town manager, and I go, okay, and Neil's like, is fifteen thousand enough, and we're like, oh, yeah, fifteen will be plenty. Oh, no. We were like, that's enough. But anyway, um, Sal?
Done.
Rick?
Um, pumpkin go, uh, get the final numbers in. We had twenty-one hundred visitors over two nights.
That's cool. Was it donation and, or could you buy the pumpkins?
No, that was all donated, um, the pumpkin.
No, but I mean, did people make donations to attend?
Yes.
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 So we had four, we gave away, gave out four thousand pieces of candy.
Wow.
Had, uh, almost a hundred jack-o'-lanterns and painted pumpkins, Jennifer said she could have used more. We had thirty-six hundred dollars in donations at the gate. Which would be towards, goes towards a ma- matching grant that we have going on right now. Well, that pitches over ten thousand dollars on the matching grant, we got five thousand dollars left, I mean, five thousand dollars left that we're trying to raise between now to December thirty-first. So it'll be nice to get that extra five thousand in there. And then we had two thousand dollars in sponsorships. So, and a little big success to O N P.
That sounds great.
That sounds great.
Twenty-one hundred visitors, I did, it just.
That was great.
We just, I mean, ten years ago, I mean, we were dreaming of two thousand, oh, two days on an O N P.
Well, I tell you what, that staff down there, Jennifer.
Yep.
Especially is just tearing it up. They're doing a great job.
Great ideas.
Yes.
Oh man, she's fantastic.
Very creative, I bet you, I don't know how that kind of mind works, where she's got a degree in music, beautiful singer. She, you know, likes to get dirty and sweaty and work with animals, that's gotta be a.
That's her out.
It comes out of her head, just like that.
Musicians are creatives.
That's true.
Is that right, chief? They're creatives.
Are you, is he a musician? Are you a musician?
Well, primarily the drums.
Cool, Justin will put you to work.
We, we have some conflicts going on, so. You gotta work through some, some man bonding, we gotta work through it first.
All right, I don't have anything, uh, we have a mayor and cats and town manager lunch tomorrow at the chamber.
Yes.
I hope to see Robbie Bobby honey. So, um, but those are always, you know, Steena really has taken responsibility of making sure that they happen. Which they just weren't getting managed, and it's been great. So I think it's been productive conversation. And, um, eh, oh. Amy, are you there? No, I, I know that, um, we'll be talking about transportation.
Yes.
Tax soon.
Mm-hmm.
One way or the other, I haven't seen anything on my phone. So, all right. Yep.
All right, if all hearts and minds are satisfied, listen, journey is eight oh one P M.
Oh, yes. Yes.